Got so much tinier now. Okay, welcome everyone. This is the October 11th Town Council meeting for the town of Kensington. And I'm calling the meeting to order. Um, first item on the agenda is a moment of silence. Does anyone have anyone that they would like to lift up?
I do. Yeah, real quick. A very good family friend of ours, Jennifer Ivory, who's been a long time board member of Villages of Kensington is just, you know, she's been very sick lately and I just want to lift her up and, you know, she's just been a great part of our community and helping others. And this is a moment when she could use a little help. So if you know her, reach out to her, but you know, just keep her in your thoughts.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands. Okay, if we can just bow our heads for a moment of silence. All right, thank you very much. Okay, council, we're going to move on to the approval of minutes. You have received the minutes. We had one small edit to the closed meeting session and we had no edits to the September 12th council meeting. Um, is there anyone want to make any edits to either of those now? Okay, if not, I'll need a motion to approve. Let's start with the, uh, closed session meeting minutes for the 12th.
I move to approve the minutes of the closed session from September 12th, 2022.
Is there a second?
Hi, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move to the regular town council meeting for September 12th. There are no edits. Can I have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the minutes from the regular town council meeting of September 12th, 2022.
Okay, is there a second?
One second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we have a special guest tonight who's going to go over the Montgomery County's pedestrian master plan. And I have asked council member Eagle Ingles to introduce our speaker tonight. Matt, or me, sorry.
That's okay. So it's a pleasure to have Eli Glazier here from Montgomery Planning. Eli is the multimodal transportation planning coordinator. He's the project lead on the county's first ever pedestrian master plan. So we've asked him on behalf of the Mobility and Traffic Committee and also the pedestrian bicycling access and safety working group to come and present where they are, what it entails and how we can collaborate with the county on this endeavor. And I understand they're in the middle of the process. And actually, when I first met Eli was when, um, when we were starting to establish the pedestrian bicycling and safety access working group. He was pretty pivotal for helping to kind of conceptualize some of the the initial work that their working group did, particularly our walkability audit and bikeability audit. He shared some materials that ultimately ended up to be what we use for our checklist, our auditing checklist, adapted some of those materials and shared some resources. So, you know, it was well over two years ago now. So, I think he was just starting the master planning process then, or at least conceptualizing it. So it'd be really interesting to hear an update from Eli. And one other thing I'll note is that we're both, I found out by doing a little research today, we're both Penn State alums. So, good company. So over to you, Eli. Thanks for joining us.
Great. I'd love to be able to share my screen if I can.
I'll actually share the PowerPoint for you on my screen if that's okay.
Yeah, totally.
And.
And I could just say, next slide, I guess.
Yeah, I'm actually gonna have to scroll through it and having some technical difficulties with.
Can make him a co-host if you.
Presentation mode.
Two.
I can do that also. Whatever you guys prefer. Would you rather me share it or would you rather him share his screen?
I think you might be more comfortable sharing his screen. Is that right, Eli?
Uh, yeah, I think, yeah, there's some like interactive components of the PowerPoint that it might be easier.
Okay, you should be the co-host now.
Great. Thank you. Awesome. So, um, so yeah, my name is Eli Glazier and I am the project manager for this pedestrian master plan that the county's doing. Like the council member said, um, this is the first master plan that uh, the county has done that really thinks about pedestrian issues in a countywide way. Uh, we've done a lot of smaller area plans over the years that may have talked about pedestrians maybe incidentally to the larger transportation element of the plan. Uh, but this is really the first time we've done this. We've focused on pedestrians specifically. The roadmap for this presentation is essentially what is this plan, why we're doing this, the goals of the plan, how far along we are, the types of recommendations we that will be in the ultimate plan document. Sort of the roadshow we're on now is part of this planning process is around these uh, policy design and programming recommendations, which are these high level recommendations that we would expect to lead to pretty significant pedestrian friendly changes in the Department of Transportation, State Highway Administration, Montgomery County Public Schools, and sort of all of the other agencies that uh, have a hand in determining, maintaining, building our pedestrian realm. Um, and then I'll get into sort of the timeline and the path forward as well. Like was already said, this is the first time we're doing this. The goal of this plan overall is to make walking and rolling safer, more comfortable, more convenient, more accessible for people of all ages and abilities across the county. Uh, I think we like to say that all trips within a short distance in Montgomery County should become realistic pedestrian trips. And I think what that means is not that everyone's going to have to walk for these quarter mile trips to the grocery store or to the park or to your friend's house or something like that. It's more about making sure that there are sidewalks that connect to where you need to go within a short distance. They're safe places to cross. The speed limit is such and speed is controlled in such a way that people feel safe taking those trips on foot. Um, just really about more giving people options to get places on foot rather than sort of the status quo that exists today. Uh, this plan was specifically called for in the county's first Vision Zero Action Plan, which was published in 2017. Uh, for those who may not know, Vision Zero is an international philosophy that Montgomery County adopted in 2016 that essentially says that no number of traffic fatalities or severe injuries are acceptable on our roads. And knowing that pedestrians are disproportionately likely to be the ones severely injured or killed, um, a pedestrian master plan makes a lot of sense to try and uh, make pedestrians safer and lower the number of people getting killed and severely injured on our roads. Um, in addition, uh, we know that making it safer and more comfortable to walk, making more having, making it easier for more people to walk has public health benefits, economic benefits, climate benefits and equity benefits as well. Uh, the planned goals are, I think, first and foremost, to increase walking rates and satisfaction with the pedestrian experience. Uh, two, to create a comfortable, connected, convenient pedestrian network. Three, uh, to enhance pedestrian safety and four, to do all three of these in an equitable and just way. Uh, so to work to address historic inequities, uncomfortable and safe access. Um, and to make investments uh, within my, with an eye towards equity as well. Um, so this plan actually kicked off back in September 2019. Um, I know, uh, I've had conversations with Kensington residents, um, both in terms of the sort of the local work that was going on in the town as part of the TLC project and the groundwork for that. Um, and as part of other efforts, um, over the course of the past few years, uh, we kicked off this plan with meetings across the county to community groups, et cetera. Uh, we had a fairly robust social media engagement process around the plan as well, really trying to understand the issues that people had from a pedestrian perspective across the county. Um, we built on that public engagement uh, with uh, sort of collecting more hard data when it, uh, for our existing conditions report, which was published in March of this year. Uh, the four main elements of that report are a countywide pedestrian level of comfort analysis, which we did that essentially for every sidewalk, trail, street crossing in the county, uh, looked at how wide the sidewalks were, how wide the separation from traffic is, the speed limit, the number of lanes you have to cross, collected a ton of really important contextual information to help um, understand what parts of the county were comfortable, what parts weren't, and how people in different parts of the county could access uh, things like schools and parks and transit centers and things like that in a comfortable way. We also worked with Montgomery County Public Schools before COVID to do a student travel tally. So we could understand for all the schools across the county, uh, how many, what percentage of the students walking or getting to and from school were doing so on foot. So we could understand opportunities to make it easier and safer for kids across the county to get to school. Uh, we looked at crash data for pedestrian crashes from 2015 to 2020 to understand where those crashes are happening and the contextual factors that may have led to those crashes that we could mitigate through this plan. And then last but not least, we conducted a countywide statistically valid survey of pedestrian perspectives and pedestrian activity, um, where we essentially sent out a a postcard with a unique survey link to 60,000 households across the county and um, worked with a consulting firm to appropriately weigh those responses based on demographics, um, to find, uh, to really understand um, a snapshot of the pedestrian experience in Montgomery County today in a way that United States Census data and other data sources that are more commonly used for pedestrian issues uh, can't really get at. So, uh, those data sources combined with some other data that we we use from the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments, uh, summed up our existing conditions report, um, which identified essentially in many cases, supported the issues that were raised in our public engagement process at the beginning of the plan, uh, but brought to light new issues as well. Um, and then, uh, what we're doing now in our recommendation development period is looking at the issues from our public engagement from the existing conditions and address and making recommendations to address those issues. So, this report can be found on our website, which is montgomeryplanning.org/walkinghere. And I'd encourage you to check that out. Um, I'll go on to the recommendations now in the interest of time, but there are five types of recommendations, these high level design policy and programming recommendations. There's going to be a recommendation that uh, uses data to prioritize where future capital projects should be built in Montgomery County that deal with pedestrian safety issues. Um, there's going to be a section about master plan pedestrian shortcuts. I think these are the connections that we're probably all familiar with where we understand in Montgomery County that sidewalks and trails may not always be the most direct path between point A and point B. So over time, people have worn these uh, trails, uh, dirt trails through grass or gravel. So this set of recommendations is about making these connections more accessible, more formal. So people of all ages and abilities can uh, take the shortest pedestrian path. And then there's also going to be recommendations in the plan about um, providing side paths. So wider pedestrian and bicycle facilities on our country roads. And then making sure that the way different parts of the county are classified for our complete streets design guide um, is appropriate, given their levels of existing and future pedestrian activity. Uh, that complete streets design guide, if you haven't checked it out, I would highly recommend looking through it. Essentially, it's a collaborative effort between the planning department and the Department of Transportation to create a vision for all of the different types of streets in Montgomery County. So as private development happens, as public projects happen, we are making a conscious effort to design these streets and to build wider sidewalks and things like that. So the streets are rebuilt in a much more pedestrian friendly way. Uh, but today I think I'm here mostly to talk about, I'm here, I'm prepared mostly to talk about these higher level recommendations. Um, I think there's a lot of them. So we broke them out into six themes. Uh, the themes are build, which is pretty straightforward about building things, maintain, about uh, protecting and safeguarding the investments that we've we've, we've made. So they last generations to come. Protect is about protecting pedestrians. Expand access is about accessibility and getting towards a more universal design. So people of all ages and abilities can get around safely in Montgomery County. Monitor is about keeping the planning department in the county honest in how we're implementing the the plan and the quality and speed of that implementation. And then fund is a few recommendations that really reckon with the fact that we really systematically, systemically under invested in pedestrian infrastructure for decades now. And uh, while the county has a lot of priorities, we may need to find some additional funding strategies to actually get uh, pedestrian like sidewalks and improved intersections built in the timing, the timeline that we're really interested in doing so. So there's 34 higher level recommendations across these six themes. Each recommendation has several key actions beneath it, which are more specific. Uh, like generally more technical recommendations that as implementing those key actions will sort of satisfy the intent of the larger recommendation. So what I'm going to do now is go through the theme, sort of cherry picking some of the recommendations to talk about. And then if there's time at the end, we can always go back and talk about any other recommendations or any questions that people have. Um, so the build recommendations, I think the main recommendation here is B1, which is essentially just to build sidewalks faster. So it's a set of key actions that, um, I'll click on this so we can see. Um, so pivoting the annual sidewalk program from a reactive request driven program to an equitable data driven one, uh, reimagining public engagement for sidewalk construction. So we uh, have the ability to uh, incorporate these local perspectives on important context into the design, but the conversation is more about um, how a sidewalk can be built rather than if a sidewalk should be built at all. Uh, there's recommend, there's key actions in here about making sure that public buildings that the county's investing in, like libraries or schools are building the walkways and bikeways along their frontage that they're supposed to through the master plans. Uh, so we're essentially holding the county to the same standard that we hold private development to when it comes to building sidewalks and bikeways. Um, working to um, incorporate the use of temporary materials to create dedicated pedestrian space where a sidewalk may not make sense in the short term. Uh, so things like flex posts and bollards, um, which you may, if you've been over to uh, Grove Street in East Silver Spring, um, there's a pilot going on right now about for dedicated pedestrian space that's not a concrete sidewalk. Um, and then um, there's a few other key actions here as well. Um, so that's, I think, a really key one. Uh, there's also a B5 is about just improving lighting in general in the county. I think this is something that was born out in our existing conditions work, but also was one of the key issues that was raised in our sort of in public meetings, the fact that it's really difficult as a pedestrian to see other pedestrians at night when you're walking in Montgomery County. And then it's very difficult uh, as a driver or as a pedestrian, uh, to see or be seen, uh, when crossing at intersections. So this recommendation has key actions about how to improve lighting for pedestrians along pathways and the intersections, both in public space and then using private development as an opportunity to do that as well. I think the the, probably the flashiest, the longest term recommendation in this set is about assuming county control of state highways. Um, I think what we're trying to do with this recommendation is start the conversation about our state roads and whether or not they should remain state roads. I think the idea here is that um, we know that state roads are the ones that have most of the destinations in Montgomery County that people want to walk to. But at the same time, uh, they're very dangerous to walk along or to cross as you are familiar with in Kensington. Um, so what we're trying to jumpstart with this conversation is uh, the recognition that moving some of these roads, particularly in our downtowns and town centers, which Kensington is one of, uh, moving these to county control to provide the county more flexibility in how they're designed and how they're, how they operate. Uh, so you could uh, potentially make wider sidewalks or change the signal timing or do these things that would make it easier to walk along and to cross these roads. And then at the same time, I think there's just a, a good governance element of this. Um, I think people on this call, in this meeting, who have reached out to Montgomery County DOT about an issue that only to find that the issue is actually about a state road. So you get punted to somebody at the State Highway Administration or the Department of Transportation at the state level. Um, and I think there just has to be a recognition that that's an incredibly frustrating process for community members. Um, I think people see the government. They don't see different jurisdictions within the government that have different response, rights, roles and responsibilities. So the extent to which uh, we as a county can stop passing the buck to another agency, another department, another level of government and really take responsibility for these roads. I think we'd see, um, it would be easier to accomplish the goals that we have from a Vision Zero perspective, from a pedestrian safety perspective. And um, it, I think it's just a good accountability, good governance measure. Uh, I'm going to move on. We can always go back to that. Um, the next set of recommendations is maintenance. Uh, the key recommendation here is MA1, which is about being more proactive about fixing sidewalks. So, uh, the key part of this is about creating a annual sidewalk inspection program at Montgomery County DOT where a different part of the county would be inspected every year, uh, sort of in a rotating basis. And um, as issues are identified in that inspection, they would be mitigated. Uh, they would be repaired by the county, uh, so that essentially we can catch smaller issues before they become bigger issues. Uh, so we can save money, um, and create and maintain our sidewalks in really good state of repair. Um, I think as a county, we already um, monitor pavement quality, pavement condition in the roadway. And I think sidewalks, to the extent that they are repaired without a 311 request from a resident are repaired sort of incidental to uh, roadway projects. So if a roadway is being repaired and there's sidewalks that have issues in that immediate vicinity, uh, the sidewalks are repaired. That's not necessarily the right approach, given that these things don't decay at the same rate. There are different problems that sidewalks have than, uh, than uh, roadways have. Uh, MA2 is about uh, recommendations to keep sidewalks and curb ramps clear of vegetation, of, of trash, receptacles, of snow, um, just being more uh, proactive as a county in doing that maintenance. And then also, um, just improving the quality of education about property owner responsibilities around these issues. So uh, we, we aren't sort of perpetuating obstructions in the sidewalk that can create really dangerous situations on roads where there isn't a buffer, the sidewalk's really narrow and people end up um, biking or walking uh, into the street because there's a blockage on the sidewalk. Um, protect, uh, these recommendations. I think the key recommendation here is about disincentivizing dangerous vehicles. Um, I think we need to reckon with the fact that uh, we're in a pedestrian safety crisis right now that is largely due to these larger, taller trucks and SUVs that have very poor pedestrian visibility. Um, so there's recommendations in this section to as a county, one, lead by example. So not purchase vehicles that have these demonstrated pedestrian safety issues and also invest as a county in um, intelligent speed management software. So county employees, when they're driving around, are doing so in a way that adheres to the speed limit. Uh, there's also recommendations in here about improving driver education, especially for drivers that own and operate these larger and more dangerous vehicles. Um, and then also a component of improved driver education in general at uh, license renewal time. So using the license renewal process as an opportunity to um, update people on traffic laws that may have changed since their last renewal, update people on signalization or um, potential different infrastructure treatments that may have changed since their last renewal, just so people can uh, stay as up to date as possible on sort of the changes to the roadway and to the transportation system. Uh, there's recommendations in here about making the walk to school safer. So providing a more robust safe routes to school program. So people uh, can feel confident, um, allowing their kids to walk to school, having more uh, crossing guards, providing more funding for crossing guards and things like that. Um, there's also an education component here, providing uh, pedestrian safety education in, in more languages than we do today and in more places than we do today. So branching out from just schools uh, to rec centers, libraries, other civic buildings. So we can um, educate a wider variety of people in the county. Um, and then, um, I think one thing we found where from our, the crash data was that while this isn't a large issue from uh, severity and fatality perspective, there are a disproportionate number of crashes happening in parking lots that involve pedestrians. So thinking about uh, ways we can create better, more pedestrian friendly parking lot design. So the conflicts between pedestrians and people driving cars are minimized, um, is something that we're also working on uh, through this plan. Uh, uh, the next set of recommendations is about expanding access, uh, which is about largely about accessibility and making the pedestrian realm more accessible to people with mobility issues, with visual impairments and other disabilities. Um, the low hanging fruit here is really reducing tripping hazards, making sure that uh, we're maintaining sidewalks in a state of good repair. So uh, there aren't tripping issues, there aren't slipping issues. Um, this is a, a really big issue that came up in conversations with the Commission on People with Disabilities and, and people and with people who are using wheelchairs across the county. Um, sort of a tag along issue to that is removing sidewalk obstructions. So um, working really diligently and proactively at this point to get utility poles, to get traffic signal boxes, to get these things that are blocking the sidewalks, that are narrowing sidewalks, to get them out of the sidewalks. Um, so um, there's recommendations in here from about providing additional capital at the countywide level to invest in moving these things and then to essentially develop practices moving forward so that as utility companies replace telephone poles and things like that, they're doing so in a way that requires them to move them from the sidewalks. So they're not just placing a pole right next to another pole, but still on the sidewalk. Um, there's recommendations in here about improving wayfinding for pedestrians with low or no vision. So providing people who are blind, um, more tactile feedback when it comes to wayfinding so they can more safely and confidently navigate around Montgomery County. Um, there's also recommendations in here to um, expand the number of sort of park offerings that Montgomery Parks has uh, to be more inclusive of people who are blind or may have intellectual disabilities or mobility concerns. And then, uh, last but not least in this section, um, I think construction zones are, have, have been for a while now, sort of a hotbed of sort of pedestrian issues, uh, when it comes to um, the extent to which a detour is provided for people, for pedestrians through construction zones. Um, and I think some work was done on this by council at, like at, right at the beginning of COVID, the COVID-19 pandemic. But I think there are still opportunities to improve on that um, and provide more pedestrian priority through these areas and making sure that um, any construction zones that anytime there's a construction zone, the sort of one of the first priorities is, is reopening that space to pedestrians as soon as possible. Um, monitor, like I said, the main recommendation here is more, it's about tracking implementation of this plan. So making recommendations here to uh, we're going to have a, a, a report, a monitoring report that tracks progress of this plan uh, posted every two years. And we're going to have an interactive website where people can see uh, the progress we've made as a county in achieving the performance metrics that the plan will lay out. And then also um, how many miles of sidewalk we've built, where those miles of sidewalk are, et cetera, just like a dashboard of pedestrian issues uh, for the county in, which is something that doesn't really exist today. And then the last bit here, um, identifying new revenue sources to fund pedestrian improvements. Uh, we tried to be pretty creative about this. Um, I think there's probably opportunities we didn't identify, but we talked about things like charging uh, market prices for on-street parking and using the ink, the difference between what that price is and the price today to fund pedestrian and bicycle improvements in the area around where that on-street parking is. Um, charging um, hu- higher vehicle registration fees for these. Um, per charging um hu- higher vehicle registration fees for these larger vehicles, which is something that Washington DC recently has done. Um, and using the difference between the current registration fee and that higher fee to fund bicycle and pedestrian projects. Um, I think there's also an opportunity to do a broader base tax on people. Um, one of the example jurisdictions that we've looked at as part of this plan is the city of Seattle. And uh, Seattle voters actually have voted, I think, a couple of times now to tax themselves uh a specific increment of either, I think, sales tax or property taxes to fund pedestrian projects. Um, so I think that's a potential opportunity here if Montgomery County voters um thought that pedestrian issues were a high enough priority that they would be willing to pay more money to accomplish some of these things. I think that's a potential option as well. Um, so that's all of the higher level recommendations. So I'm going to talk really briefly about um the second thing here, which is about prioritizing locations for pedestrian capital projects across the county. Uh, because there's uh, I think a pretty cool opportunity for public engagement um on this item at the moment. Um, so essentially what we'd like to do is create um a prioritization approach for where we should be, where in the county we should be investing money in these issues. Um, but using data to do that and trying to be transparent about where um the inputs that we we have and what data we use to identify which parts of the county are priority. So one way we did that is we created this pedestrian prioritization tool, which is available on our website and I can distribute. Um, which essentially, there's some explanatory text on the website, but it comes down to essentially this map and uh the sidebar on the right, which has essentially different variables. So I want to invest pedestrian uh capital dollars in places where there's a lot of pedestrians, places where there's more pedestrian crashes, missing sidewalks, equity focus, greater school access, et cetera. There's essentially ten different factors. And as a user of this map, you get a hundred points to spend to distribute between these factors. And the factors you think are more important can get, um, you can spend more money on those, more points on those factors. So if you thought that investing in areas with missing sidewalks was equally important with an equity focus, you could put fifty points in one and fifty points in the other. And then you can actually click visualize and this map on the left will show you where, if those are your priorities, where that investment would be targeted. Um, and you can see on the screen, my, I just said ten, ten, ten equal across the board. And you can see that uh parts of Germantown pop up, Montgomery Village, Durwood, um, Aspen Hill, Bethesda, Silver Spring, um, and East County along the US twenty-nine corridor, for instance. So uh, that's just one weighting as an example, but um, as community members, um, I would encourage you to check out this tool, uh, play around with it. You can visualize multiple different scenarios. And then you can actually submit your prioritization to us. So we can take that and incorporate that into the ultimate prioritization we move forward with um as part of this plan. So again, um, that tool is on our website at montgomeryplanning.org/walkinghere. And you can also review all of the policy recommendations uh that I just really breezed through really quickly. Uh, you can see the key actions and then each key action also has um a narrative rationale. So much more information beyond what I've said, sort of describing what the implications of that action would be. And if there are relevant precedents and who the lead agency would be for that project and um what goals that key action helps address. So uh, the last thing I have, uh, the timeline moving forward. Um, I've been uh, like I said, doing this roadshow for the past several months about uh these recommendations and where we are in the plan. Um, I presented these recommendations to the planning board in, on September twenty-second to get their feedback. Um, we've incorporated their feedback to uh, we're continuing to incorporate their feedback. Um, I'm, I'll be continuing community engagement about this plan through the end of the year. Um, at the same time, I'm writing the draft plan, which is mostly just stitching together um, the existing conditions report, the recommendations pieces of this uh with an introduction. Um, and then we anticipate the work sessions for this plan, beginning with the planning board in early uh in January of twenty twenty-three. So we anticipate having a public hearing um probably around January fifteenth. Um, and then we'll start the work sessions on this plan sort of in the next few weeks after that. And then um, if you're not familiar with the process, um, the plan then moves to county council where there's another public hearing. And uh, this plan will have work sessions at the, that T and E committee, the Transportation and Environment Committee uh before going on to the full council to be voted on uh for approval and adoption. Um, and at that point, it will be a, the master plan will be approved and adopted. So I think this whole process will hopefully pan out um over the course of um, early to mid twenty twenty-three. Um, but there's still, I think, really good opportunity now to participate in shaping these recommendations. And then uh, when the public, when the draft plan is released to the public and the public hearing um data is set, there'll be opportunities to submit written and and oral testimony as well, um, which would be again in early twenty twenty-three. So uh, I talked for a long time. Uh, I'm sure there's probably questions or or concerns or critique. And I, I would welcome that um if there's time.
Tracy, did you want to moderate or do you want?
Well, I, I have a couple of questions. That's the great thing about being mayor. I get to go first, but.
That's what I thought.
And then you can moderate the rest. Um, Eli, thank you for the presentation. That was really great. I just have a couple of questions. Um, has S H A, have they adopted the vision zero? You said it was national or international, I.
Yeah, so, so the philosophy uh sort of originated in Sweden and different communities around the world have adopted it as something that they aim to achieve. Uh, Montgomery County, the Department of Transportation, et cetera, adopted it, like I said, in twenty sixteen. Uh, to my knowledge, the State Highway Administration in the state of Maryland have not adopted it. They use an approach uh called towards zero deaths, which is not as elegant, I would say. I think uh, I think clearly there is support at State Highway Administration for reducing fatalities and severe injuries on our roads, but it's less of an absolute goal and more of like a distant, something to aspire to. Um, so yeah, I think not formally, they haven't formally adopted.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. We had a meeting a couple of weeks ago with MC DOT as well as some other municipalities of how uh, the, the state highway doesn't quite understand vision zero and how to and what we can do. There, there was no solution in our conversation, but it, it is a challenge. Um, because A, they don't move very quickly. Um, so they, they always want to study things, which sometimes that's good. But um, anyway, thank you. Um, other, another question, um, you're strictly looking at pedestrian. It does not include bicycles because every time we talk, it seems like we have to have bikes and pedestrians. So I'm just wondering, how does your plan?
Yeah.
With bikes?
Uh, so the last time I spoke uh to this group, uh, it was a different group, but the same uh uh, the town of Kensington Council uh was about the Bicycle Master Plan, which was adopted in twenty eighteen. Um, so this plan is specific to pedestrians. I think if you have, I'm very knowledgeable about that plan and sort of the interplay between the pedestrian and bicycle issue. So if you do have a question about that interplay or bicycles, I can answer that too.
Well, I guess it's more of uh in the new planning, are you trying to include, you know, in a new development, are you looking at bikes and pedestrians? I mean, uh, we find a lot of times in older development areas, there just simply is not the room to have good pedestrian walkways and bike lanes. That it's, we're having this problem on a, on a Kensington Parkway where they're just simply, and to provide parking on top of that. So that, I guess that's the question on, but.
Yeah, I think that is the question um, is to provide parking or not. Um, I think in, in a lot of the down county, um, it's when it's built out, there, yeah, there isn't the right of way to get every single priority. So there are, I think, uh, this is again, just ringing the bell again for the Complete Streets Design Guide. Um, if you look at that document for different street types, there's default widths for different things. So different streets have different elements. So some have parking, some don't. Um, some have six-foot sidewalks, some have ten-foot sidewalks. Um, and there are default widths, which we would ask, we would insist on from a private development. But then there are also minimum widths, there are preferred widths. So it creates this spectrum of different options to work with a constrained right of way. Um, and I think, I think what we'd like to convey with this plan is that um, in sort of the hierarchy of needs, um pedestrians are above bicyclists. Um, but I think both of them are probably above car storage, um, if that makes sense. Um, so I think that's the lens through which the planning department is really looking at how to mediate between these different um needs and desires within the public right of way.
Okay, I, I appreciate that. Um, two more quick questions. Well, one's not a question. Thank you for the educational component. I think that's really important, particularly in the immigration community where um, I happened to live with an immigrant. And when he was sixteen and came to this country, he had no idea about traffic. I mean, he just stepped out into a road. So, you know, I think that is a really big thing about, you know, education. And um, we have a constant problem with a six lane of Connecticut Avenue and people like to cross it mid-block. You know, that is just um, they're just, and it's of all ages. It's not just kids, it's seniors, which is really frustrating. And, and lastly, on your survey, you said that, you said you sent out sixty thousand. What, what was the return on that?
Yeah, so we worked with a consultant who cautioned us that we should probably expect like twelve hundred response. We got like twenty-four hundred response uh, which uh gave us a margin of error at the countywide level of about two percent.
Okay.
Um, so yeah, I think we're really happy with the response rate, actually. Um, and it's something we're looking to do to repeat. Um, so we can sort of track uh some of the metrics we ask, we have in the plan are about satisfaction with different things. So the extent to which we can monitor that over time uh is really important to us in terms of measuring um how we're implementing the plan. Um, so yeah, I think this is also something you're going to see more of from the planning department is just um, obviously continuing to do public engagement like we're having right now, but also um to take a higher level view and to um reach out more countywide and in a more scientific way with, with surveys and things like that.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Nate.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So I have a bunch of questions too, but I think I'd prefer to let everyone go first. And then if those questions aren't asked, I can, I can do the cleanup, but maybe uh turn it to the council first. And see, Anne, I'm sure Connor will come in next. Okay, Anne?
Okay. Uh, thanks so much, Eli, for the presentation. I think it uh, it's very helpful in the way that you're organizing the plan and also organizing the process, I think, um, has been great. Uh, so one question I have is on the fund aspect and would love to hear you address how you're looking at any of the funding sources now available through the bipartisan infrastructure law. And in particular, what the county's process will be for sort of prioritizing which projects, you know, how your prioritization process fits with the timing for some of those programs? Because we want to make sure that we can be a part of that for any priority projects in our area.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think uh, we haven't really gotten that far in terms, in terms of um that specific funding source. I do know that um, MCDOT is pursuing funding through uh those avenues already. And our parks colleagues, I think, are also putting together and have put together requests for funding through those channels. Um, I think that the timing of this is such that um, once this is adopted and approved, um, we'll be working really closely with the Department of Transportation to um assess the projects that they're thinking of doing through this prioritization lens. Um, so we can um move forward uh with the projects that provide the highest value for the county. Um, I don't know, do you have any other, you have any thoughts or perspectives? Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I, I understand wanting to have a final plan and go through the full engagement process. But given that it is a lengthy process, I would encourage you to start talking with them sooner about uh the deadlines for all the various pedestrian safety funding programs and how they are getting organized so that we don't miss out on an opportunity. Because I bet there, you've already probably developed enough tools that.
Yeah, that's fair.
You can, that you can inform their process around prioritization. Um, and that's something, you know, I think Nate, we can talk further about with, with the council and the committee. But I imagine that we would want to um continue to talk to you about as well.
Yeah, happy to, happy to continue to be a resource in that to the extent that I can.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Anne. Connor, Darren?
Darren, you can.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate the, the presentation and um I'm kind of mindful of a couple of things as I, as I listen to you. Um, for example, the, the prioritization of pedestrians over cyclists over car storage. I mean, I get that, but, but we all are at different times in one of those modes. And I remember years ago, somebody wrote, wrote in the Washington Post that when you're a pedestrian, you hate cars and bicyclists. When you're a bicyclist, you hate cars and pedestrians. When you're motorists, you hate pedestrians and cyclists. And I, I just feel like it, it, we are constantly in tension with the modes that we're not currently in. Um, and, and to me, it, um, I don't know if you've ever played the game Frogger on the computer, but you know, it's, it's, it's things be moving at different speeds. And, and when you have cars going, you know, thirty to fifty miles an hour and you have bikes and e-bikes going twenty and scooters going speeds and then pedestrians. Um, I, it, it almost seems like it's to the point where the, the driver, which is the most dangerous because he's surrounded in steel and he can hit things that are not nearly as protected as he is. It's almost like a saturation point for, for the driver. And, and so I, I, I appreciate the pedestrian master plan, but I, I think I, I, I feel like the integration with Complete Streets and, and the overall looking assessment of safety for everybody out there is probably the, the greater priority. One specific thing came to mind with your presentation. You talked about higher registration for these vehicles that you've considered to be dangerous. Um, I mean, the, 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 I'm, I'm thinking of the, the, and again, I know we're here to talk about pedestrians, but I'm thinking of the cyclist who was killed in Bethesda recently. We, 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 we won't get rid of dump trucks. You know, we need dump trucks. Everybody needs dump trucks for, at, at one point in their life, whether we're rebuilding roads or building houses. Um, and so as you're thinking about funding, you might consider not just taxing higher the, these vehicles that we're not going to be rid of, but um incentivizing with lower fees for cars that have sort of the, the collision avoidance features that are, are targeting and that are specifically designed to protect, protect pedestrians. Doesn't help fund your projects, but I think, you know, when, when I bought my um Chevy Bolt many years ago, Maryland provided me with a twenty-four hundred dollar tax incentive. And that was important in, in the purchase decision. And I just think that given the saturation that I feel exists with all the different modes out there, um, we, we need some technology help to solve that. And, and I think the cars, whether they're self-driving eventually, or, or at least have tools built into them, that's really where we're going to make a lot of headway with protecting pedestrians. Because I think, I think they think better than we do. So, but thank you for the presentation.
Yeah, no, thanks for your perspective.
Hey, Eli, um, thank you for the presentation. I've, I've got a couple of thoughts. Um, some that might be contained within the plan and then some that cross over into other actions, like that would be more county council. Um, the first, you described the proactive repairs that, you know, the vision you guys are, are working on in the plan is to inspect the total, you know, the sidewalks annually in a section by section, zone by zone, area by area across the county. Um, what more, I mean, how realistic is that? I mean, is it a, are you, what is the technology you'll be using? How do we know? How do you do a quality control that know that these sections have been checked? How do people, how are we able to input information there? I mean, is, is, if this system were open to the public, couldn't you get hundreds of eyes on sidewalk as opposed to a small group from? transportation that's going around annually?
Yeah, I think the recommendation, the sort of gist of the recommendation, the bulk of it is more about just being more proactive and diligent about understanding the maintenance issues that exist and that are on the rise. I think we're sort of agnostic as a department on what the approach is. Like, I think it would be great if the Department of Transportation had an asset management system where you and where everyone, the public and sort of the bureaucracy could see for each sidewalk segment, like what condition it was in based on some objective scale that, that exists across the country. Like my, in my prior life, I worked as a, I was in the private sector doing bicycle pedestrian planning consulting across the country. And there are sort of visual and narrative descriptions of like different levels of sidewalks that need to be that are in various states of repair or disrepair. So something like that exists, like there are criteria around these sorts of things. So whether it's putting it out to the public and help having some sort of shared monitoring system or a team of a few inspectors who just every, every year, they go to a different part of the county when they're not doing like in the downtime, like sometimes there's, there's like a construction season, right? So people are monitoring construction, they're building things, highway services is doing maintenance. And then at a certain point, it becomes too cold really to, the weather's too bad to do these projects. So there's opportunities to sort of re, reallocate that labor into doing something like this. So maybe that's the option. I don't think, I think we're just saying in this plan that the goal we want to get to is a proactive approach to doing this. And however, the department, however, the county chooses to do that, I think would be great. We're sort of agnostic on the specific method.
Yeah, I mean, I just, as you go back and you have conversations, I think there's a real opportunity to engage the public, not just on writing the plan, but on, you know, the maintenance, the tools are there, which we have a lot with GIs and other things. If there's an inventory system where people can self-report. Now, are they going to be necessarily as trained or knowledgeable? No, but I look at and I think about what, you know, Nate helped start with essentially the inventory of our whole town for our pedestrian safety bicyclist working group. And he, you know, set out here are the criteria, here's the education, put on a vest, mark the areas around the town that you think we have a sidewalk issue. And I think, I just think there's a real opportunity instead of putting it as, you know, in, in other assigned activity to a few staff members, I just, I feel like this is a huge county. There's a ton of stuff. Will that downtown even ever come? Recipe for success might be low. You could empower your citizenry to go out and help, you know, light up the map for you.
Let me, yeah, I don't disagree. I guess I would push back a little bit and just think about the fact that we don't ask the public to do this for roads. Like, I don't think it should be the community's responsibility to make sure that the road, the sidewalks are in a state of good repair. Like, these are certain things that the government should, should do.
I agree. However,
Do we do odd hole reports? Yes.
Yeah. And, and it's about time to fix, right? So we can, you know, if you spread it out to the masses and you get thousands of eyes on it, you can get a lot of reports, a lot of data really fast and then start prioritizing. If you have it in this, we're going to do sections of the county little by little, you know, one year at a time. And so it might be six years before we come back to your neck of the woods. I just think by the time you're going to have things reported and not fixed for years.
I think that's, yeah, I think that's possible. I think it's, it just comes down to how it's implemented.
Just a thought.
Yeah.
And then the other one goes, because this happens, we see this with S H A, not to say M C D O T. But they will be some sort of improvement approved. And then they go to do the work and they will only do that specific work, which is in that specific work order. As opposed to thinking, hey, we have a system that we're going out to this section of the county. Let's look at all of the approved work orders and trying to make all the improvements we can in that area. So this just goes to process because it was frustrating for us. This isn't your problem, but it's the best example I have where S H A came out to make a change that was approved five or six years previous. And we knew there were subsequent issues in the very same section that had been approved. And they're like, well, that's not this work order. You gotta wait three years till that work order comes to the top of the queue. So. Yeah. The the, the last comment I had was only because our neighbors to the south are working on it right now, the District of Columbia. And that is looking at how to change traffic laws as opposed to just the built physical infrastructure to also try and meet vision zero. And so they expressly, just recently, were looking at just outlawing right turns on red universally across the district. Is that something, where would, would you all make, would that be like a recommendation that you would send to the county council? What other traffic law changes are you all looking at that, hey, these are, these aren't necessarily to do with the built physical infrastructure. This is permitted at, you know, movements that if we just change the traffic laws, it's not to say it'll change behaviors, right? People violate traffic laws all the time. If we change it, then we can put in an enforcement and an education piece, maybe in the opposite order to over time change behaviors.
Yeah. So I think there is a recommendation in this plan to make no turn on red the default in downtowns and town centers. So Kensington being a town center. So our more pedestrian friendly areas today. I think there's also a, there will be a recommendation in the plan to look at minimizing the use of what are called permissive left turns. So a left turn across traffic without a signal, without a left turn arrow. Because those have, those are very dangerous for drivers and then also for pedestrians sort of on the receiving leg of that turn. So looking into ways to work to either prohibit left turns or more likely to add dedicated left turn signals. So when left turns are happening, there's no sort of parallel pedestrian conflicts. And then the last piece, I lost my train of thought, but yes, I think, oh, the last piece is changing our crosswalk yielding law from one where a pedestrian needs to be in the crosswalk, which is what it is today, which is, I think, very poor at leading to actual yield behavior because drivers really kind of intimidate pedestrians from entering the crosswalk to what we see in Virginia, which is pedestrians get the right of way, should be yielded to at the crosswalk. So you are just sort of about to enter. So that's another, it's, it's a safety issue if there's enforcement and people actually adhere to it, but it's also, yeah, it's a safety issue. I think there's an element of convenience there as well, being more confident that at an uncontrolled crosswalk, so one where there's no stop signs or traffic signals, that you'll be able to cross safely. And I think education is obviously a big piece of that. And then there's potentially enforcement actions. I think crosswalk stings are like fairly popular traffic enforcement behaviors from members of the law enforcement community. So.
Then this will be my last one. And I appreciate the, all the, the time you're giving to questions. I don't know, I will be honest, based on what you, you were just saying about, you know, how the crosswalk law works. When you have a, a divided road where there's some sort of boulevard to median, but there might not be a, an island, a pedestrian island in the middle, right? It's just a long crosswalk. How does it work? If there are way over three lanes over on the other side before median, is the opposite traffic expected by law to stop?
I'd have to look at the regulation, but I'm fairly certain you have to yield if a pedestrian is in your lane or the adjacent lane.
Okay.
Which is confusing, right? Because we all know the school bus law is, it is, if it's, if it's undivided, if it's undivided, it's every lane.
Yeah.
So that is different from the school bus law.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
See, I knew you had questions, Connor. So I think if I, I may, most of my questions were actually answered by everybody or already asked by everyone and answered by you, Eli. I just had one before maybe opening to the public. One specific question and then one just more general about recommendations and how we can help and implement them here. How receptive on your B10 recommendation about the county taking over the state highways within the county? How receptive have other county officials, technocrats, or whoever you've, this, this recommendation has been presented to? As well as the state, how receptive have they been? And then I'll ask you my last question.
Yeah. I think, to be honest, they haven't been. I think there's some heartburn at the county government. So just for people who don't know, the planning department is not a county agency. We're a separate agency. So we are a quasi-state agency. So when we make recommendations, we are not the implementing agency generally. So the Department of Transportation, other agencies are the ones that implement the plans. We just create the vision and the recommendations to achieve that vision. So yeah, I think there's some heartburn, there's some concern about the potential cost implications on the county side. And I, I think that's completely understandable. I think if something like this were to move forward, we would need to be very clear about how the shift in maintenance and operations responsibilities would have at the same time, a shift in funding to do that maintenance from the state level to the county level. I think there's probably also some upfront capital costs we would need to incur from a, like a purchasing perspective when it comes to like vehicles and potential more employees and things like that. The state, which I think is all surmountable. I think these things, these things can be figured out if the county is interested in pursuing this. The state has been silent on this recommendation and on most of the recommendations in this plan. We have, in addition to a community advisory group from across the county, we've had an inter-agency working group of members, stakeholders from the different agencies that are going to be implementing the plan. For the whole, since 2019, we've had this group and we've met at every stage of the process. And yeah, there, there's not been a lot of response from the state on any of these recommendations, but especially that one. I think you'll find if you've been following the conversations about vision zero and about pedestrian safety and pedestrian connectivity at the council and at the planning board for the past several years, I think there is an appetite to explore this from elected officials. What form that takes, again, not totally sure, but I think the twin goals of providing more design flexibility and being more responsive and accountable are sort of what we're trying to achieve.
Yeah, I, I thank you for that. I saw a town manager, Matt Hoffman's eyes light up when I said, I think maybe he's wanting to take it one step further. The town take over the state roads.
I mean, please, by all means.
The last question is just really, how can we help you and how you might be able to help us? So we, you know, Connor mentioned this audit that we do with your help. We had the, I said in the beginning, the, the survey that we produced and we're going to do it again. We make it essentially a biannual thing. So this is going to be done for the second time this coming fall. We audit all the streets. It's not just pedestrians, it's for cycling and safety, lighting and so on. So is there a way to use that to integrate into this? What, what can we do as a town to help besides providing a letter of support and public commenting period for this? And then very specifically, we've had, you, you referenced this TLC grant that we did with the county and Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments. We have the state highway or the state, yeah, the state highway, we're going to be working with to do our state bicycling pedestrian priority area designation. But we know already, I mean, I've used the prioritization tool that you showed. It shows Connecticut Avenue, no matter how you slice it, and Knowles Avenue are high priorities. We identified solutions. What can we, how can we leverage this master plan? Or do you have recommendations for how we get these things prioritized and implemented now? I mean, we know what we need, we need to do essentially.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a good question. I was going to say letter of support, public testimony. I think a recognition that we need more money to do these things. If we can make the sort of the, the pot bigger, I think a lot more projects can obviously get built that need to be built. I think I would wait and see what the prioritization approach we end up moving forward with ultimately is. But I think using that and then pointing to the specific projects that you've already identified to address the issues on those roads would, I would hope be very effective in working to make those priorities over the next several years of the capital improvement program. I think the frustration that I have, I think that everybody has around these issues is that it's a long, it, it always takes longer than you think it will. And I'm sure anyone who participated in that TLC and worked with the stakeholders from the county and the state on that project are well aware of that and the timelines that were provided to get some of these things built. So I think design takes time and the earlier that you can work with your council members here and at the county level to make those projects priorities. I think that's probably a winning strategy relying on the recommendations in the plan, just pointing to what we're going to be doing essentially at the planning department when we work with private development is pointing to recommendations in the plan, pointing to priorities we've identified in the plan and saying, this is a, this is in the master plan. Can you make this happen along your frontage or in your property and things like that? And I think there are opportunities for you all to do something similar and push county government in that way. Essentially, when this document is approved by county council, it, it sort of becomes what the county wants to do when it comes to pedestrian issues. In private, on the private side, it, it has, I wouldn't say quite the force of law, but it's a binding document that we need to enforce as a department. So the extent to which at you all, but also advocates in general can, can push the county to honor the commitment it's made by approving this document to actually implementing it, I think would, would obviously be tremendously helpful.
Well, thanks. I hope there's a lot more of, of you there ready to implement it when you get all of the requests coming in once it's passed. So.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah. It's eight 10. I certainly want to give the public an opportunity. We have a fairly light agenda tonight. So if we can take no more than the next 20 minutes. So if the public has, you know, one question, that would be great. And then we can close it out by 8:30.
I saw Jack has had his hand up for a while and then I see Alan, Simon.
Okay. Can you hear me okay?
Yep. Thanks, Jack.
Thank you for an excellent and very thorough presentation. You've obviously put a lot of work into it. I have three suggestions that would be inexpensive and easy to implement and would result in significant improvements. First, I suggest, I suggest that instead of putting the sidewalk right next to the curb, you offset it in, away from the curb so that people walking, you don't get splashed when it rains and you don't have to watch out. So some trucks and school buses have side view mirrors that stick out, stick way out. Second, regarding bicycles, I've, I've noticed bicycle lanes that are out, outside toward the center of the street from the parking lane. I suggest it would work better on some, some, some places like the city of Montreal and all, offset the parking and then have the bike lane between the parked cars and the curb. Thirdly, as an astronomer, I feel it's important to preserve dark skies. I agree with you that you, you need to illuminate the walkways and all, but it's important that they be shielded so all the light goes down and you don't waste light going up, which only illuminates the underside of birds.
Yeah, all, all fantastic suggestions. Again, I would encourage, to the extent possible, we're not, we are not making recommendations to build sidewalks immediately next to the curb. I think. we are not making recommendations to build sidewalks immediately next to the curb. I think Kensington residents, anyone who lives along a state highway or works or is familiar with that and how dangerous it can be. So having a sidewalk, having a buffer between the sidewalk and the street, and then having the street is, is absolutely the standard across the county. And I think what varies really is how wide that sidewalk is and how wide that buffer is. But in all cases, we would expect the sidewalk to be offset like that. On the second point, I would encourage you to check out the bicycle master plan that we approved and adopted in 2018. Because whether it's parking, we would call it a parking protected bike lane like you, you mentioned, or there's other, many other types of separated bike lane treatments that improve bicycle safety that are being built across the county. And you could sort of see the master plan for that in that document. And then on dark skies, absolutely, I think we actually are embarking with the Department of Transportation on a TLC project like, like Nathan and the Kensington team have done to improve our lighting standards. And one of the criteria we're looking at is making sure that the standards that we create are dark skies compliant. So thank you again.
And thank you.
Think Alan, you are next.
Okay, thanks Nate. And Eli, great information. Thank you. I just wanted to pick up on one of Nate's questions because I'm a part of the Pedestrian and Bicycle Access Work Group. So as Nate said, we're about to undertake the walkability audit and we can certainly take this offline if you want, but is there a way either the questions we're asked, the information we're collecting, or how we are going to compile that that might make it easier to feed into, you know, what you're putting together in your database? Because you know, we, we do it biannually. If we can modify what we're doing or the way we're doing it now, it would be a great time to, to sync up.
Yeah, I think let's think about that more and connect maybe separately. We can maybe do a teams meeting or something to talk about it a bit further.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much. I think I see one more question from Joe Campbell.
Thank you, Nate, and welcome back, Eli. I'm Joe Campbell. I live on Frederick Place on the south side of Kensington. And I wholeheartedly endorse the, the notion of at the crosswalk rather than in the crosswalk. That's an important distinction. And it's, it's really vitally important, crucial, I'd say, for pedestrian safety. So I, I think that was, that was an important, if minor observation that you made. And another one was I, I would love to see crosswalk stings that you, that you briefly mentioned. I'd love to see crosswalk stings in Kensington, Maryland. I've never heard of them before, but I think that would also be a way of, of enhancing pedestrian safety. You mentioned that sidewalks connecting people to short walks, to short trips are imperative or important. Could you just clarify briefly what the plan specifically calls for in that regard? I may have missed it, but I, I was very interested in knowing about that.
Yeah. So I think that's just kind of the vision that we have. If you look at sort of travel data, like how far people are going on trips on a daily basis. While the commute trip tends to be like the furthest trip, a lot of the travel that people take is within like one to three miles of their house. So the extent to which we can lay the groundwork for people to feel more comfortable taking those trips on foot or in concert with the bicycle master plan by bike. We're going to help achieve the county's climate goals, safety goals, et cetera. There are no, I would say, specific recommendations other than in the Thrive Plan to get to sort of this, this live, this way of living so that all of the, the land uses you would need are within a short walking distance. But we're just trying through this plan to make sure the infrastructure is there to make those pedestrian trips viable.
Yeah, I think that's very important in, in a Kensington context because, you know, it's a small town.
Yeah.
But it lacks sidewalks in, in several parts of town. Sidewalks that would make these kinds of short trips much more viable, much more tenable for, for residents. So I think that's, that would be an important component. Would you speak for a few moments about how enforcement of traffic regulations and speed limits, even in small towns such as Kensington, would enhance pedestrian safety? Or as you put it, the pedestrian experience?
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. I think there are a few principles that we think about when it comes to speed and enforcement. I think ideally our traffic laws would be self-enforcing. So we're essentially designing the roadway so that you can't exceed the speed limit. That clearly is not working and has not worked on something like Connecticut Avenue. So there's recommendations in the plan about improving and expanding the use of automated enforcement to provide sort of an unbiased, neutral observer when it comes to who is who is violating traffic laws. I think there's probably a role for, I think that's the extent to which we talk about enforcement. We talk about education as well. I, I think there are challenges with enforcement beyond the automated enforcement, just from a, just from an equity perspective potentially. But I think if we're building, we're building the infrastructure as part of this plan, hopefully, and then making sure that people follow traffic laws is another vital component to ensure pedestrian safety.
Yeah, I, I think, I think the two are inextricably linked. Automated enforcement, though, that's expensive and I think resented by a lot of people too. Is, is that a reason why it's not really highlighted in the emerging plan?
It is called out. It's in the funding section now, but I think we're moving it to the protect section with the understanding that if it's, if it's, if it's carried out successfully, it will actually lead to improved compliance, which would actually lead to reduced fines. So not really a long-term sustainable funding option for pedestrian infrastructure. Yeah, I think honestly, people don't like to get caught. So that's a, that's a frustrating thing. I think another issue we have is that the regulations about speed enforcement and automated enforcement in general are at the state level. Montgomery County does not have a lot of flexibility or a lot of control over the number or location of those cameras. Which is something that I think the police department is keenly interested in improving the number of and location of where those cameras are, not from like a revenue perspective for them. I think the revenue is required to go towards pedestrian safety and other similar improvements. It's more about if it allows law enforcement to focus on other things and have traffic enforcement be done in sort of a, a neutral automated way. So I think there are just challenges. It's, there's obviously public opinion challenges about some of this. I'm not very, I, I hear what they're saying. I'm not like, it doesn't, it doesn't really do it for me. I think if you drive the speed limit, you'll be in good shape with that sort of enforcement.
And, and finally, and very briefly, I was wondering if you might just describe these enforcement stings at crosswalks, how they work and who, who conducts them?
So I've never witnessed one personally, but
Nor have I.
But often there are, there'll be like a newscast in local news about it, but essentially like an, an undercover officer or something will walk across the street in like a legal way. And they'll make a note, somebody will be observing them and they'll make a note of who yielded and who didn't. And then a cop car hiding around the corner will then go pull over that person. So that's, I think, in its simplest form, what that sort of enforcement could look like, whether that's punitive or educational. I think that's up to the officer's discretion.
Or is it more of a stunt, Eli?
Okay, thanks, Joe. So I think we have maybe time for one more question, if there was one. I don't know, Larry, want to, want to make, or were you raising your hand? Did I see it fly up there? If not, just stay muted. I think that's it, Tracy. I think that we have exhausted all the questions.
Okay.
So much. And again, feel free to distribute my email and some of the links to the website and things like that. I'm happy to talk to anyone else or get feedback from people on the recommendations in the next few weeks.
Okay, thank you, Eli. Really appreciate you coming tonight and providing this information. It was very, very interesting. And you know, and hopefully, you know, like the bike master plan and, and the other plans that the county has adopted that we'll see things, you know, actually happen.
Absolutely.
That'd be great.
Thank you. Yep, have a good night.
Thank you very much. All right, uh, let's see. Let's, let's, we have one more item to discuss, but let's go ahead and get the council updates, council reports. Let's so, let's do that next. Connor, do you want to go first?
Sure. Just one, I'd like to put out for discussion with the council and then we can introduce it in November. But I'd like to ask that we start a ad hoc committee to review, at least start with St. Paul Park and Reinhardt Park, the two parks that have playground equipment to look at improvements that could be made to the playground equipment to make it more inclusive to kids with physical disabilities. So it coincides with some neighbors on the north side who had inquired about it and myself and, and Anne and Mayor Tracy just happened to be at the MML Fall Conference and having that chance to look over some of the, the, the new inclusive playground apparatuses that some of the vendors had there. So I just wanted to open it up initially tonight and then ask that we take it up more formally in November. Susan, one thing on that, one of the things we'd like to look at is program open space. And so just, just to put a bug on in your ear about, you know, what are the timelines for that? So that we, as we begin to look at this and we think about apparatuses and we think about phasing out how we might want to do stuff, we, we make sure we meet those deadlines for any, you know, grant applications.
Okay, I can send you this.
Great.
Did we, did we just have one, Susan? I know you asked.
We had the, the community parks and playground.
Okay.
Was like the end of August and we did not submit anything for that.
Okay, well, that, that
That's a competitive one.
Right, but we could apply for that as well. So so we just need the deadlines. Okay. Yeah, one of the bigger items is, you know, getting away from mulch and doing more of the, the rubber type of surface. That's a, that's a major one. So I think Connor and Anne and I were talking about maybe doing it in probably phases because there'd be more. So, but speaking of playgrounds, Matt, did, did Playground ever come out for the repair on Reinhardt?
They replaced the one climbing wall and they put the LED lights on the Reinhardt Park. They're having some issues finding a replacement for the tunnel that will fit appropriately. So we've been talking with our, with our representative Jeff over there to find something that is, if, if they remove the tunnel, there's nothing that can really go there other than an additional rope walk. So we already have one. So they're looking for something that can fit better.
Okay, so the tube is still there with
The tube is still there for the, for at least the time.
With all its murals?
Yes, unfortunately.
And Matt, how about, were they going to look at St. Paul Park and, and the zip line feature that's kind of
You know, looking at a replacement for that as well, yes.
All right, before we just go ahead and choose something, if we bring this up in November, you know, since we're looking at maybe replacing an apparatus, this may be the just coincidentally good timing to look at, you know, those apparatuses that could be included that are more inclusive.
Also, also in the context of the HOC playground equipment we're talking about, maybe we could do both St. Paul and HOC together, depending on what they, what they said when we inquired about.
We have not received, go ahead, Tracy.
Yeah, well, I was just going to say Al had reached out. He CC'd me on a letter to the executive director for specifics of where they are. And as far as I know, they have not replied, or they at least didn't reply at all. So I think they're still either waiting on parts or something, but certainly want to get it, you know, up and going with the repair. But I think our priority would be our own parks, but you know, we could do, see what we can do with the repair. There's some sort of grant that we could provide for that. But I, I mean, they just have not been speaking to us regarding, you know, the cost, the estimate and what needs to be done. So it's a two-way street. So. But anyway, but I, I'll follow up with Al to see if you got a response from the executive director. Okay, um, it sounds good. Any objections to us moving forward with looking at our parks to be more inclusive? Okay, good. All right, anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, Anne?
I just have one brief item I wanted to flag. You may, some of you may have seen on the neighborhood listserv that the Parks Weed Warriors program has scheduled two dates to gather at Kensington Cabin Park and tackle the weeds and vines that are choking trees. It's October 26, 10:30 to 12:30 in the morning and October 30th, 10 to 12. So please spread the word. We'd like a good turnout for that.
Did, did you have to be a weed warrior? Or there was some confusion or you're led by weed warrior?
You are led by a certified weed warrior, but if you would like to pursue certification, you can get credit for the hours you spend at the park.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And I will put the links in the chat as well for signing up.
Okay. Nate?
Just two quick announcements about upcoming meetings and events. We have our Green Team and I'll be chairing our first Green Team meeting this coming Thursday at Town Hall. Depending on the turnout, we'll probably use the map room. And that's at 7:30 to 8:45. I think it should be on the town calendar now. Hopefully, Alex, thank you and sorry about that. And then we also have the Walktober event. I forgot to mention when I was introducing Eli that his presentation came at a good time because we're now in Walktober. So we have our annual Walktober event on the 29th with the rain date on the 30th. Hopefully it doesn't rain and conflict with the Weed Warriors, but that will start at Reinhardt Park and we'll look for the first hour at some of the improvements that we were mentioning in, within the last hour when Eli was here along Connecticut Avenue. And then the second hour of the two-hour timeframe will be doing a walkability audit training for the public who want to get involved with that process that we just discussed.
Okay, Darren? Uh, you're muted.
I mute myself and add that we have a Mobility and Traffic Committee meeting on Monday, the 18th. Is it Monday? Let me just confirm that.
It is Tuesday.
At 7:00 PM. And we're just going to sort of go through the, the variety of priorities that we've considered in the past and, and kind of regroup because we haven't met a while for a while. I've not met for a while because I wasn't on it last year. Just to sort of figure out now that traffic has come back after the pandemic, you know, what are the priorities that we want to focus on and so anybody who wants to join, that will be, correct me, Nate, Matt, that will be better by Zoom?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. The 18th is a Tuesday. Yeah. Okay, great. And the, as I think Connor mentioned that Connor, Anne and I were at the Fall MNL, MML Conference on Sunday through today. And it was a very good meeting and it's always good to get together with our other municipal leaders and talk about how awful state highway is. It's always good. It was, I think there was somebody in Poolsville, Nate, you'll love this. They say they took over a part of a state high, state highway. They just kind of took possession of it that runs in their town. But I think it's a two-lane road and not probably quite as exciting as Connecticut Avenue is. So I don't know, but that's what they claim, that they, they just took it over. And maybe, yeah.
Don't get mad at the ideas.
I know. I'm not, he won't, he won't like it when we have to go to pave it though. I think that might be a little bit. So pave it and remove the snow. So the snow removal. I would like to, we are bringing pumpkin rock and roll back. It'll be on the 30th at Warner Circle Park. That'll probably be our last event, at least in the It'll be on the thirtieth at Warner Circle Park. That'll probably be our last event, at least in the back of the house for a while. The county has come to an agreement with the. Restoration and the addition to the building with the developer. And very excited to see the house start being restored and put back into use. So that's a good thing. So we should see some action definitely there by the spring. So if not before. Okay, so, um, unless there's somebody out there that has a question regarding any of our reports. We will move on to the one oh five oh nine Summit Avenue. Darren, are you discussing that or did you want to? Have Matt lead the discussion?
I mean, Matt, if you want to lead it, that's fine. I don't see in the resolution, I mean, this is not the first time it's coming before the town. And, and so I, I don't recall what date we previously talked about, you know, approving this and at least in concept. And now what we're doing is putting it into writing. If you're able to add that matter.
So one oh five oh nine Summit Avenue LLC made a request in November twenty twenty, so almost two years ago. To use a portion of the public right of way on the west end of Kaiser Place, which is between Summit Avenue and Dietrich. As a public plaza to meet the requirements for the flats at Knoll Station Project, which will be located at the corner of Knolls and Summit Avenue. The council agreed to allow, at the, at the council at the time allowed the developer to move forward with it. And we are now drafting the Declaration of Covenants and have a resolution in return for the public plaza. We are requesting that a sidewalk be installed on the south side of Kaiser between Dietrich Avenue and the public plaza. That the developer maintains the property or the, the public plaza area. They are also responsible for the improvements and that the town will still maintain it under our jurisdiction. But will not have any maintenance responsibilities.
And can we be clear that this is not, we are not giving the land to the developer?
Correct, so it will main, it will be maintained as public right of way or a public plaza. It will be under our jurisdiction. We are just requiring the developer, or if the property is ever transferred, whoever takes ownership of it to maintain the public plaza area. So in speaking with planning previously a couple of years ago, this is a somewhat common request, especially in urban areas. Where they don't have enough public area, we will designate a certain public right of way for the plaza or public space, so.
But the, will the condo association be maintaining it?
No, we, no, it will be the flats. We specifically wrote within the Declaration of Covenants that it will be one oh five oh nine. Uh, Summit LLC, which is the flats and not the town home project. There was a draft Declaration of Covenants from the developer originally that had the town homes, HOA maintaining it. Our town attorney advised against that and, and Montgomery Planning agreed as well.
And what happens if the flats no longer exists or sells?
It would be under a certi bond. We would have a certi bond on the development, but that would go with the, with the flats project. So, I mean, this probably will not be developed until they start breaking ground at the flats, so.
Okay, do we have a, a requirement that they finish this portion of it before they finish the flats?
We can write that into the, the bond. We can certainly do that, or we can have Sue Ellen draft it into this, this Declaration of Covenants.
I just feel like it could be dragged out for years if it's not done. You know, I mean, I, I would like to see a, a time period that our expectation that it'll be complete.
The council has the authority to essentially put anything they want into this covenant. So we can add that into it. And, you know, request that the public plaza is built before the flats project is started, or at least, you know, starting soon. That's something we can certainly include.
Can we just ask them to do it when they finish the condos, upon completion of the condos? I actually thought I saw a bunch of bricks there. Were they not planning on using that?
I wasn't sure if those were leftover from the house.
Oh, okay.
The bricks that are at the end of the street right now are leftover from the town homes. They're not for the public plaza, so.
Will there be a sign? Are they gonna do kind of like a welcome to Kensington?
The existing town of, well, the town of Kensington sign that was there that was removed for the construction will be replaced by the developer.
Our existing sign will be.
Correct.
Do we need to approve this tonight?
I would probably, technically no. You know, we, we could do it in November. It is available to review and approve this evening. We just received this from the town attorney, so I know maybe not everyone's read through it. You know, and there's also a discussion, you know, what we want with regards to design guidelines. If, if the council wants to have that conversation this evening or not, is completely up to the council.
I mean, I feel like we dotted the i's, but we haven't slashed the t's. I just feel like that, um, I know, um, myself, I, I know a little bit about what's going on. But I, I, and I know other council members may feel like, you know, I really want to sit down and go through this one step at a time. And I, I don't know how the other councils members feel, but, but I, I don't feel we're ready to approve this resolution tonight. I would feel better discussing it a little bit further.
My, my suggestion, I think, because I know we've done this before, is that we. Approve it in substance and, and give you, Tracy, the ability to, you know. Sign it in substantially this form. And the reason I think that would be useful here is that, you know, it may not satisfy planning requirements. So if, if, and, and, you know, if, if we met every two weeks for twice a month, I would say, fine. But, um, you know, I, I hate to, to kick this for another month while we're figuring out if it, if it meets the requirements. I also, my sense for this, first of all, let me, let me say two things. I, I don't think we should wait to install this. Until the flats are on, under construction. I don't think you can technically start until the flats. His intent from my conversations with him is he, he's already, he's gonna install like half of this plaza. As a result of improving the town homes. And I think it's in all of our benefit to have the same pavers, the same installation be done at the same time. And, and so if we, if we could move this along, I think it would help. Just to improve that overall corner and make it look more finished. So if you're amenable to it, I would, I would just sort of, I would like to give you the authority to prove it once you know that. What you have in front of you is acceptable to the developer and to planning.
Well, I don't know how we know it's acceptable. I mean, you have to sign it and then give it to them, right?
Right, I think we would, yeah, and, and again, I, I guess. Another view, another point I would make about this is we're not talking rocket science here. If, if this were a covenant regarding. The allocation of parking spaces within his project to us, I would think we'd want to be really thorough. In essence, this covenant is for the installation of some pavers and one or two benches, I think. And so I don't think it's, it really, you know, merits a kind of scrutiny that, that we would normally do for other covenants. But, so I, I, you know, just to, to move this along, so we're not adding it to, you know, November and December possibly agenda. I would just, my suggestion again is to give you authority to sign something in substantially this form. If you sign it and planning says that's fine, except for this paragraph that we needed to say something different, then. As long as we feel like it's still substantial in that, that form, you just sign a new version of it and, and we're done with it.
So we can't show it to planning first and let them tell us whether they would approve something like this?
You, you can, but I, I guess, again, I go back to, if they say yes, that's fine, then you sign it next week when they approve it. Rather than coming back in a month and, and then saying, um, now I'll sign it because they've said, okay.
So you're suggesting that the council approve this signing, but not sign it, just send it to planning to see what their thoughts are on it. And then if they don't have any questions, then we sign it and send it back.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm, I'm not sure there's a big difference one way or the other. I think if you sign it and they tell you it's inadequate, then it's, you know, then we need to revise it and sign a new one. It's, it's not like we're binding ourselves if, if planning ultimately says it's inadequate.
So we've, we've approved contracts previously in substantially, you know, a, a certain form for the town attorney to review. And I think that's what Councilmember Bartram's talking about, where. If the council is willing to approve the resolution this, this evening, then the staff, town attorney and I. Would kind of work with the planning department and the developer on some of the questions that we have within the Declaration of Covenants. The one thing I did notice is there is no landscape plan for the project. Which is rare. Normally, there's a landscape plan. We spoke with planning. We reached out to them. Again, we have not heard back with regards to a landscape plan. They only provided us with a site plan. The original plan that was submitted to us with the developer stated trees. Um, the site plan does not include trees. It listed four trees. If you're on site, there's no way we can get four trees in that location unless we're planting dogwoods. I don't, you know, there's some questions that staff could work with on the developer if you're willing to go that route this evening. That we could, you know, have some of our concerns answered with regards to landscaping and maybe some of the furnishings. But, um, it's, you know, the council needs to have this kind of conversation, so.
I'm glad you brought that up, Matt, because I did notice in the. Uh, final paragraph where they're talking about the planter boxes and the trees. It does say with plans subject to approval by the town. So is that the intent that they would, would come back, you know, after having this staff dialogue with. A landscape plan that, that we would then have an opportunity to review and.
I'm very comfortable communicating with planning and the developer to make sure that our expectations are met for the public plaza area. Um, so if the council wants to proceed with the resolution this evening. Town Attorney Ferguson and I can work with them to make sure that there is an adequate landscape plan. And that the furnishings meet our expectations, along with everything else outlined within the Declaration of Covenants.
Okay, and then, um, I'm not sure, just. On Mayor Tracy's point about asking if they could do the public plaza behind the town homes first. Um, rather than wait for the condos, is where did we land on that? Because I think that's a good point.
There is two public plazas within the flats project. There's the one on the flats pro, you know, property. And then there's the one that is adjacent to the town home project. I feel like they need to do them together. Uh, but at the same time, you know, we'll leave kind of a void at the base of Kaiser Place for possibly two or three years. Um, so that's something that we need to address and figure out how we want the developer to proceed.
I don't, I don't, I wouldn't support that. I think it needs to be done now.
I mean, I think it can be done similar. Doesn't have to be, you know, the color scheme is the same. I don't think it has to be the same pavers or, I mean, I, I. I mean, we could be sitting here five years from now still waiting for this to be done. I, I really have an issue with it. Just waiting on the, on the flats. I, I mean, it basically means the project is unfinished on this corner.
You want both parts of that corner done now? Because I think that's what I heard Nate saying, and that, that's certainly what I would like. I, I don't care what they do across the street on the flats, because they can't do that until they build the project and they can't do that until they get through the record plan. I just want a finished appearance for the southeast corner of, of Knolls and Summit. So that somebody walking down Kaiser, perhaps like my father, can walk, you know, from Kaiser and, and get out to Summit.
But you're talking about the entire project on Knolls too, or just?
I'm talking about that, this, so I, I view them as having two, you know, it's, it's, it, you won't even, once it's built, it shouldn't be. Discernible that there were two different projects. I think what we're dealing with here is one public plaza that is about half the size of the. You know, pavers that go around that corner that are attributable to requirements for the town home project. And then because of what we did back in November twenty twenty, the other half of that is a plaza that is attributable to the flats project across the street. Tom will build the first project attributable to the town homes now, just because he's trying to finish it. I think my strong preference is that he build both. Haves of that corner now, so that, that he's done on that side of the street.
All, all on the southeast side.
All on the southeast.
Yeah, so you're saying like the separated sidewalk with the buffer, the grass buffer along Knolls and everything, plus the. The part that we're talking about tonight with the public space, all continuous.
Whatever he has to do with respect to the town homes, plus the plaza that we are.
Alex, since it's in the council packet, can you bring up the site plan? Just so there's a visual aid. It's called zero seven dash site.
So sorry, my computer is freezing.
That's right, let me do it. I think I can do it, right?
Oh shoot, that's not everything.
Yeah, that's only the agenda. You want Connor to do it?
Yeah, let me see if I've got it, alright.
While you're pulling it up, I just have a quick question. What, if they decide not to, are they not maintaining it? And some, something happens and someone hurts themselves, who's liable?
I'm sorry, what was the question, Nate?
Are we liable if someone hurts themselves, themselves if this area is not being maintained or?
It's, it's public, well, it's public space, so, you know, the town would always be somewhat liable. Uh, but if it's, if it's, you know, directly due to maintenance from the developer, then obviously, you know, if there was litigation. They would probably bring it towards both the town and the developer, or at that point, whoever owns one oh five oh nine Summit Avenue LLC. Uh, so we are, we are asked to be additionally insured within the Declaration of Covenants, so.
So just to continue this conversation with the visual aid of the site plan, right? This is Summit Avenue going south to north. This is Knolls Avenue. This section here, these are the six town homes that are under construction or recently finished right here. There are two sections of green, one on the south side of Knolls, one on the north side of Knolls. There is a section of blue. And then there are the two sections of, I will call them pink. Um, so Darren, what you were saying is all these areas south of Knolls. You would like to see finished now, realizing that this area north of Knolls, that is also public plaza. Was part of their public space calculation for the one oh five oh nine project. I, you know, cannot be completed until that project is completed, but what we're discussing is this green area here. Was included in this project up here as part of their public space calculation. But we are asking that they. Begin, you know, do the construction and completion of this section to the south. Now, prior to waiting for this whole project to start.
That's correct, and, and I think the developer wants to. I mean, he's going to finish the two pink areas and the blue area as part of finishing up the town homes. And I think while he has a crew in building really what's, I guess, the blue area. He wants to build the green, and and I think that's to our benefit.
Okay, well, that's making more sense. I took this as he wasn't going to do the green until the building on the. Other side on the north side was built. Then he would do the plaza on the north side with the plaza on the south side. So now I'm understanding it is, no, he's going to do everything around the townhouses on the south side of Knowles. And get it done, correct?
That's my understanding, but I'm certainly happy to memorialize that with him.
I, I would like that in writing.
Well, and I think that was the point that Matt brought up is let's just work for clarity and. Put that into the covenant so that there is an expectation of when this will get started and. I don't know if we can, you know, if we want to go so far as to say how and when it should be finished, but I agree. I, and and I think Nate, I, I think I heard you say the same thing, that this, this needs to get done. Your preference is this get done sooner as well to coincide, even though it's related to the one oh five oh nine project called the flats. It needs to, it's finishing needs to coincide kind of with the finishing of the townhome project, so that it doesn't, it's not left. Um, you know, unpassable and unsaid.
Yep, yep, that's my opinion too.
And then that's mine as well, just for the record, but yeah, Darren, I mean, I, it does sound like. From your conversations with the developer, he is eager to do this. Uh, and I too would be eager to have him do this and not, you know. Realizing that the calculations are tied to another project, that doesn't mean the timeline has to be.
And so, and so it, I, I think this is one of those situations where it's in everybody's interest to move forward with this declaration now. Because he builds the thing sooner. And having the declaration approved by planning. Helps him, you know, chug towards a, a final approval to build across the street.
So with that, Tracy, I mean, are there? How do we want to proceed then with the Declaration of Covenants, the, the draft resolution that's before us today? Is it, do we feel like, you know, are we in a position where we think we can pass this tonight?
Well, Sue Ellen reviewed it. She, did she write it, Matt? So, I mean, I trust what she did. I think what I want is a, a commitment. From the developer of when this is going to get done.
Well, uh, Matt, and you said, you know, to the council's preference, if we want to revise this. To include language on when it is to, you know, needs to start within a hundred and eighty days or ninety days of. Of us, we can do that?
Yeah, we can revise it again, so it's, it would be similar to any of the contracts that we passed previously where. We essentially would send it to the town attorney to finalize the contract agreements. In this case. Uh, there's some questions that we need answered. When is the project going to start? When will it be completed by? We still need some clarification on the landscaping plan. Um, we can clarify that this project needs to be included with the public spaces for the townhomes at, at Noel Station Project. Um, at that point, I think, or at least I'm comfortable moving forward with the understanding that, that we can complete these for the council.
Is there any penalty for not completing the job?
So we would require a bond before he would proceed with this, uh, within the bond. Um, we could request a certi bond for this project in addition to, you know, separate from. Flats project where he has to put up an amount that if the project's not completed, there would be funds. To cover the completion of the public plaza.
Okay, would it, would it include repaving the street?
Kaiser Place, um. Well, Washington Gas will do the repaving for the gas work. Uh, I don't know how that would work. I could talk with Washington Gas. Uh, but they should be repaving Kaiser following the temporary patching for the gas connections that they've done for the six townhomes.
Okay, cause uh, I mean, the entire street is a mess. I'm not sure how far down.
Um, it's to the base of the street, so.
But part of the base of the street, though, is the plaza, right?
Correct.
So it'd be better to have the plaza in before WGL comes to. Cause he, they could be paving over part of the new plaza.
Um, theoretically, yeah.
Alright, well. This is the discussion portion, uh. The resolution is in the next portion, so. Does anybody else have any additions that they want to make regarding uh, what Matt should be asking?
Well, I guess to try and marry the two points together, as I'm following the discussion. Uh, Darren, if the thought is, this is the, the plan for one oh five oh nine. Is going for the planning board, what is it, next week? Um, and the developer is hoping to have this included in that plan. So as to have it passed altogether as one, in our covenants, couldn't we start the clock and say? Um, that, you know, the work on the public plaza needs to begin within. A hundred and twenty days of when the plans for one oh five oh nine are passed by the planning board. So the clock doesn't start till his plan passes, but once it starts, he's got, you know, whatever we want to say, three months, four months. To at least begin the work, not finish it, but begin the work.
Oh, I want to finish work too.
Well, now it's going to be my next point of discussion.
My suggestion, because first of all, the flats project has been fully approved by the planning board. It's a site plan amendment that is going before the planning board. And and that involves, you know, shifting some live work units to, um. I think, I, I can't remember what it said, hoteling, essentially.
You're right.
Um, so, uh. My, my feeling is, it, we're not talking about a big portion. I mean, you just saw it on, on the site plan. Um, I would, I just want it done. And, you know, i- if, if he, if, if we make him do it and he runs the risk that, you know. The whole project falls apart and and doesn't get built across the street. I still want the, 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 I want the corner to be done, so I, I would just prefer to get it. Started much sooner, not tie it to approval of the project across the street. It's not a, it's not an expense to install pavers and benches and and a couple of trees.
I agree, I just was, I was trying to make sure, I was trying to figure out exactly what your point was, if it was. So I, I'm in support of what you just said. I'd rather, how do we want to write this to hard coding that it needs to start? Soonest and be finished soonest plus ninety days. Um, so that it's in the covenant, as Mayor Tracy indicated, so that it's, there's no ambiguity that of our expectation as to when it's going to start.
So optimally, let's just request that he start when he starts the. Connected portion that's related to the townhome.
The blue, the blue portion that we had had up there?
If planning tells us we can't do that, you know, then, then we'll deal with it, but, but for right now, I would. Yes, so I, I would like him to do the green when he does the blue.
Got it, okay. Matt, you can make that legal, right?
Yeah, I mean, we'll. I mean, I'll talk with the town attorney, uh, you know, we might write something in there that they have to complete it within a hundred and eighty days. Of the signing of the declaration, um, or or some kind of language that Sue Ellen would suggest. And we'll just write in that he needs to do a certi bond to cover the project in case, um, the project does not finish.
I'm good with that.
Okay. Does anybody in the audience have a question regarding this topic? Hmm, David? Romeo?
Thank you, Mayor Farm.
Uh huh.
I noticed in the attachments, the agenda, this evening meeting, there was a section about some light posts. Does that pertain to this plaza?
Uh, that is for the, um, that is for the public area, which would be on the flat side. Uh, there's no proposed lighting in the public plaza for what would be between. Uh, at the base of, of Kaiser over to Summit, uh, there's some benches. There's three benches, and there is some vegetation that was initially proposed. It's not in the site plan. That's what we mentioned, we're, we're missing a landscape plan. There's no landscape plan for the project. Um, but we will put some language in there, um, within, within the Declaration of Covenant to make sure that there is at least something in there. Uh, that is representative of what the developer first proposed to the council back in twenty twenty.
Um, I just wanted to make a brief comment that these, uh, this wide word series pole has a. WFCL two fixture or lantern atop the pole. Which is, uh, from my understanding, a full cutoff LED fixture. Which will, I hope, provide adequate lighting, but not excessive overlighting. And minimize the, uh, degree of light pollution, so. The council, in consideration of these, uh, this landscaping, if they were, um. Take that into consideration in approval of the project. I, I would appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, David.
Oh, I just wanted to, uh, post two links regarding the, uh. The figure, the, uh, lantern and the, uh. Type three LED distribution light pattern, which apparently is a. I had the impression was a characteristic of this particular ladder, but I don't see it now. Some types are better situated for other situations than. Uh, for us, streets versus sidewalks, that type of thing. So I just submit that for your consideration, if you are of interest.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands.
Um, I did just want to offer, Matt, um, as you work on the landscape. Plan with them, um, from a greenscape committee perspective, I, I'd like to be involved and helpful to you if I can be.
Alright, so, uh, we'll move down to, um, public appearances. Um, this is the opportunity for anyone on the call to, um. Bring up something that is not on the agenda. Jack?
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Great, okay, I have four astronomical announcements. The moon was full on Sunday and it's still almost full.
It sure was. It was big.
Yeah.
It was very cool.
Yeah, always looks bigger when it's close to the horizon.
Yes, it does.
Okay. Um, the night of, uh, October twenty one to the morning of the twenty second will be the Orion's Meteor Shower. Um, and they're predicting twenty meteors per hour. The crescent moon won't rise until three o'clock, so we, uh, good viewing all, all through the night.
Okay.
On November four and the morning of November five will be the, the peak of the tower is meteor shower. Um, they're predicting five to ten meteors per hour. Unfortunately, a nearly full moon will interfere with viewing with all of the brightest meteor, meteors. Um, and they say the best viewing time is just after midnight. And on November eight, eight, there will be a full moon and a total eclipse of the moon. The moon will enter the penumbras of the Earth's. Shadows starting at, at four ten AM, it will be totally within the Earth's home rate five seventeen. And the moon will set at, at six forty seven, just a few minutes after, uh, it begins entering the penumbra. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jack. Uh, Joe?
Thank you, um, interesting discussion just recently about the, uh, streets that are a mess. That certainly characterizes a substantial portion of Frederick Avenue here in the south side of town. Uh, this has been the site, as I've mentioned at previous council meetings, the site of a prolonged. On again, off again, on again, project by Washington Gas. And this, the effect has been that the street has been left as a mess. It really has been a mess for a longer time. Disrupting the wider neighborhood. And, uh, I, I just have a question, I guess for the town manager. Are permits of any kind required from the town? For Washington Gas to do this kind of work? Any permits that Washington Gas is expected to, and required to take out? Or any permits that its contractors are required to take out? Because, you know, this has really been quite a mess for an extended period of time.
Yes, so Washington Gas receives a permit for any, any lateral, uh, changes, which is what was happening on Frederick Avenue. This was a very large project, as we've discussed previously, uh, they are replacing, uh, over seven hundred linear feet. And doing some connection changes for residential properties. Um, MT Laney, the contractor, was there milling and putting some tack down yesterday. Uh, and they are in the process of proceeding with the paving project, so.
So it should be done soon. Do these permits require any kind of performance standards that Washington Gas to meet? Or its, its contractors? Because this has gone on for such a long period of time, even though it is a major project, I'm sure it's not the most. Substantial project that Washington Gas has ever taken on.
So there's Montgomery County standards, uh, that they must meet, uh, with respect to paving projects. Um, and they are meeting them as far as I know right now. Um, you know, like I said, this was a very large project. Uh, there have been leaks on Frederick Avenue for as long as I've been with the town. Um, they have dug up that road in multiple locations, they dug it up, up after we paved it. Um, they seem to have found the solution, um, so I'm not going to press too hard at this moment. Uh, they are completing the project and paving the road, so.
Okay, I, I, I appreciate all of that. I just, uh, want to emphasize what a disruption this has been. And how the road has been left, and a substantial portion of the road has been left in a mess for quite a long time.
Jack, did you have another, uh, question, or is your hand just still up?
My comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Actually, currently, uh, the construction isn't Washington Gas. It is a paving company that is replacing the curbs on the lower part of Frederick Avenue.
Yeah, that's the, um, paving contractor of Washington Gas.
Well, but they're doing the curbs and, and, and not the block top in the street.
Okay, well, that's part of the process, so overall.
Yeah, and that, and they didn't get it, Washington Gas didn't get it right the first time. They, they dug it up, they paved it, then they came back and two weeks later dug it up again, and, you know. The, the, driving there is like a roller coaster.
Okay.
Which is why I was asking about performance standards, because that's just exactly what you don't want to have happen.
Okay, thank you, Jack. Any other questions? Okay, I am not seeing any hands. So we will, uh, move on to ordinance resolutions and regulations. Matt?
Uh, Mayor and Council, uh, before you this evening is Resolution number R dash twenty four dash twenty twenty two. Resolution of the Mayor and Council of the Town of Kensington approving a Declaration of Covenants. Access easement in agreement with one oh five oh nine Summit Avenue LLC. I would recommend within the motion that we clearly state that we are, um, adopting this substantially in the form attached. Allowing Town Attorney Ferguson and the town staff, uh, to clarify a number of questions we continue to have with the covenants.
Okay, council, do you have any further questions? Okay, does the audience have any further questions on this resolution? I'm not seeing any hands. Can we have a motion?
I move that we adopt Resolution number R dash twenty seven dash twenty twenty two. Uh, as substantially written.
With the amendments that?
Uh, thank you, uh, as substantially men, uh, written with, uh, the amendments put forth.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you very much. Number two.
Thank you, Council. Uh, before you, this evening is Resolution Number R dash 27 dash 2022. A resolution of the Mayor and Council of the Town of Kensington approving a variance at 10025 Frederick Avenue to allow for an encroachment of approximately two feet into the allowed 10-foot side yard setback in accordance with Section 5 dash 104B of the Town Code. Uh, we held the variance hearing at our September meeting. And at the request of the council, we received a letter, uh, in support from the adjacent neighbor, which was included in the council packets. Staff, um, has no issues with the variance and, uh, we're requesting approval this evening.
Okay. Uh, Council, do you have any questions regarding the resolution? Okay, does anyone in the audience have any questions regarding the resolution? I'm not seeing any hints, okay? Um, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number R dash 27 dash 2022.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you very much. Matt, when does that, uh, once it's signed, when does, do we have to wait 30 days on the resolution or is it? Can go right away? Can't hear you.
Sorry, so as soon as we sign the resolution, uh, they may proceed.
Okay.
They may, uh, begin filing permits, um, with the town and the county. Uh, formally, we do have, um, you know, most of the documentation from the architect so far, but we'll proceed with the permitting, so.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Snow.
Thanks, folks.
Okay. All right, number three.
Thank you, Council. Uh, the last resolution this evening is Resolution Number R dash 28 dash 2022. A resolution of the Mayor and Town Council of Kensington authorizing the extension of the existing refuse and recycling contract with Ecology Services Refuse and Recycling LLC for the term of one year. Uh, we haven't, um, we had an existing three-year contract with Ecology. And within the three-year contract, there are three one-year renewal options. Uh, we need to approve the renewal in, uh, in agreement with Ecology. This would be the second one-year renewal, which would leave us one, uh, one-year renewal next year.
Okay. Council, do you have any questions? I see a hand for, uh, from the audience for the resolution. Joe?
I'm wondering whether there's any contract increase, uh, with this extension.
The, there is a two and a half percent contract increase, uh, within the one-year increment. Uh, there is the potential for more increases depending on transfer station fees, dumping fees, or if there's any, um, amendments or revisions we may have to make throughout the year, which are allowed within the contract.
How, how much is the contract worth? What's the value of monetary?
Uh, about 190,000.
So, uh, can you tell me how much the increase is? You said two and a half percent?
Two and a half percent.
You know, I think refuse collection overall has been very good with this company. I think this has been a, a good move. Uh, the only problem that I see periodically recurring is that they, their trucks, uh, leave oily patches on the streets and, uh, this happens from time to time. It doesn't happen all the time. And, uh, over the years, I, I brought this to the attention of the town staff and, um, it's, it continues to be a problem. And I wonder, Matt, if you're aware of that as well.
Yeah, so anytime we get any, um, you know, comments with regards to Ecology or a prior refuse collector, especially pertaining to, uh, leakage of lines, we advise the route supervisor immediately. Um, we are very happy with Ecology of our contractors. They're probably the best that we've had since we've gone, uh, outsourcing. It was very difficult, uh, the first year of COVID. Uh, I, we, we were very concerned in the town. Ecology could not keep CDL drivers, uh, and we were having that issue throughout the county, throughout the state, throughout the country. Uh, Ecology was able to collect trash twice a week, brush and recycling, um, once a week during the entirety of COVID. Uh, this is a very good organization. I'm very happy with them and I hope they're with us for quite some time.
Yeah, I'm not disputing any of that. I'm just saying that the, the, the recurring problem of leaks from their trucks seems to be a performance issue that, uh, is, does the contract address this in any kind of way, directly or indirectly?
We advise them anytime we receive comments, um, the route supervisor checks the trucks. And it's, you know, their responsibility to maintain the trucks so they can keep the route running.
Yeah, I guess I was asking if there's anything proactive that, that they would be doing to keep this from happening, because it does happen.
I, I could reach out to, uh, Eco. To get a further insp- for you, Joe.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, um, was someone to make a motion? Was there a question?
I, I was just gonna say, in light of what we're seeing about, you know, labor shortages and, and inflation year over year compared to a year ago, I think a two and a half percent increase is, is actually very favorable to us and, and I'd be happy to, um, make a motion to approve Resolution Number R dash 28 dash 2022.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Well, can I, can I make a correction?
Sure.
To the resolution, the resolution states number R dash 28 dash 2021. Can we correct the resolution number on the document?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good. On the agenda, it's correct.
Yep.
There was, uh, uh, the revised agenda that went out to the public this evening did also, uh, correct the number of units. There was, uh, the units were not correct on the original release on Friday. Um, you'll notice that we have six additional units um, for the, for the new contract as opposed to the contract that we agreed to last year for the townhomes. So that would be the change.
Okay. All right, um, let's say, I don't think we need to redo the motion.
Just have the number.
Cause you said 22. Yeah, when we sign.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, so you want to keep your?
And I will second.
Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you very much. All right, I just need a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn tonight's meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
I can.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you very much. All right, we will be, uh, in person at our November meeting, is that correct? Or, uh, actually, I'm sorry, I know we've elected to adjourn, but, uh, Matt, you had a question about the November meeting?
So town staff has Friday, Nov-